All right. Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for coming out this evening for our Killington Select Board's Forum. My name is Mike Koppinger. I'm going to be the moderator tonight. I'm also the vice president of the Killington Pico Area Association. Before we get going too much further, I just want to ask everybody if you have a cellphone, a pager, a lightsaber, a pacemaker, any sort of instrument that might cause noise and distraction. If you could silence it at this point, I would really appreciate it. Also, for some housekeeping, we do have two bathrooms right here. If anybody needs to use the facilities during the evening, you can do that. Just try to be, you know, quiet about it as you're getting up. So again, you're not a distraction. In case of emergency, of course, there are the exits in the back where you came in. And we also have another side exit right here if, again, if there is an emergency. So at this time, I would like to turn it over to our president, Beth San Andrea, who is going to give us a more formal welcome. So, welcome, Beth.
Welcome, everyone. Thank you all for being here. I also want to thank Andrew and Jim for being here. I know that they are here because they have the same goal that we do here at the KPAA. We just want to have a stronger, better community. And, you know, we strive to see our business community, our residential community, the town government, and the resort all communicate well together and come together to make us all stronger. So it'll be great to get to know our candidates tonight and hear where they stand on issues. So thank you for your time tonight. And at the KPAA, as you know, we run this welcome center. We host a monthly mixer. The next one will be on, let's see, March 5th. That's Tuesday night at 5:00 at the North Star Lodge.
There might be something else going on Tuesday, too, I think, right?
Something happening today?
Yeah, I think so.
I know. So afterwards, we can celebrate together. And let's see what else. If you want to sign up for our newsletter, we do have a sign up form on the front counter there. We also have a new membership level, which is friends of the KPAA. So you don't have to be a, even though we represent the business community, you don't have to necessarily own a business. You can join as a friend if you want to just support us running our events. We have two signature ones a year. It's the Holiday Festival and the Wine Festival. We appreciate everyone's support. Thank you all for being here. And I'm going to turn it over to the forum now, too.
Thank you, Beth.
Thank you. Good luck.
So again, the reason why we're here is to hear from our two candidates, challenger Andrew Gedda and incumbent Jim Half. So I just want to run over the agenda for this evening so everybody understands how things are going to run. So in just a few moments, both candidates will have an opportunity to do an opening statement. We determined who was going to go first earlier this evening by a coin flip. Then we'll go through a series of 10 questions. These are prepared questions that both candidates have gotten beforehand. This isn't an opportunity to have like I got you type questions. I felt that it was important, and the KPAA felt that it was important, that these candidates see these questions ahead of time so we can really find out how they stand on these issues that are facing our town. We will go through each candidate. We'll have an opportunity to answer, and then we will oscillate between candidates. So when candidate one goes first, candidate two will answer. And then the next time around, candidate two will go first. We are adding the option, if one of the candidates would like to rebut what another candidate has, they'll have 30 seconds to do so. However, the candidate who answered the question first originally will have the final word. After the 10 prepared questions are done, I am going to start to go through the questions that have been emailed to our organization. I have some of those now, and as I had stated before, if you would like to write down on one of our index cards a question, you can do so, and I will hopefully get to those later on in the evening. I would just ask, when you do those questions, please make the questions pertain to both candidates. I would rather not have you ask an individual candidate a specific question. Make it a general question that both candidates can answer. Finally, at the end, both candidates will have an opportunity to do a closing statement. And again, we determined the order of that by a coin flip. And then finally, I'm going to ask for your help as the audience. I'm going to ask that you refrain from any cheering, groans, side conversations, things that are going to distract and take away from us hearing from the candidates. Until the end, we'll have an opportunity to thank and give an applause, not only to both these candidates, but to the great town that we live in here in Killington. So with that, according to our coin flip, we're going to do opening statements, and Andrew is going to lead off our first opening statement. Andrew.
Hi, guys. My name is Andrew Gedda, and I've been in this community for 20 years. Thank you, guys, for coming. Last time I did something like this was in college, 2009. So adrenaline is kicking in, so allow me some time to come down. Hopefully, you know, all the butterflies are going to settle. As most of you guys know, I'm Polish. I was born in Belarus. My mom is a doctor. My father is a mechanical engineer. I speak four languages. Since I was a child, my father would teach me how to work with my hands. I had to pick up a pallet of mortar at one side of the property, a pile of sand with buckets on the other side. I had a big mixing pail. I had to carry water, and I was mixing with a shovel two, three yards at a time. We couldn't afford to buy concrete that was already pre-mixed. So my father thought it was going to be a great school for me. And he would always say, "Son, if you're not going to go to college, you're going to be using that shovel to scoop shit." So I've, and what's amazing, years later, I still enjoy working with my shovel. And I'm proud of it, and I'm proud of it. So I finished my high school in 2000. I got a scholarship. I went to Poland, to another country, and I studied political science for four years. I was able, I was fortunate to get the J-1 visa, work visa. Like all the students that come and work for this community, I was one of them 20 years ago. Actually, this year, June 7, I'm celebrating 20 years since I came to Killington and I left, and I've been a part of this community. 2005, I went to Castleton State College, and I studied business management. Those were fun years because I had to work two jobs to pay painfully. I paid for my degree. And now I look back, and I'm thankful that I was able to study in both countries, both Poland and America. I'm thinking, because that's question number one, right?
No, it's still your opening statement. And...
So I'm going to kind of wrap things up. As the first quick, yeah, I'll finish the second.
Okay. Thank you very much, Andrew. Jim, opening statement.
My name is Jim Half. I've been skiing in this resort since 1976. I met my wife, who was born and raised in Rutland, Vermont. Actually, her father, my father-in-law Eugene Keon, was the one person that had this area here. He was the state forester for Killington before it was a ski resort. And he actually took Press Smith up his first day up to the top of the mountain. I'm not going to go into when I was born, where I was born, my college or lack of college because I've been hit on that already at a meeting. But I came to this town in 1997. I didn't move here for a business opportunity that I saw. I moved to Killington because I loved skiing here from 1976 on. Moved here with my wife from San Jose County with a daughter who was only about eight weeks old. Since then, two more daughters, 20, 24, 26. They've gone through this school system at Killington Elementary School. They've also gone through the Woodstock High School. All three of them, luckily for me, have gone to Smith College in North Hampton. One is still in Smith at this point as a junior. What got me into running for office here was back around 2006, 2007. I got very interested in things that were going on. The town was in kind of a turmoil at that point. It was the us and them. We were against the resort, and they were against the town, I guess. That's what I was told. You know, at one point in my time here, I was in the resort's pocket, and then all of a sudden, I was not in the resort's pocket. Then I was in SP land's pocket, and then I wasn't in SP land's pocket. I wish I was in someone's pocket because I wouldn't have to be working today. It just kind of saddens me that we have gone through so much since 2006 and 2007 that we've come to be a Killington Forward, Killington One. And now, all of a sudden, I have an opponent that is coming against me, or the whole board, it depends on which paper you're reading, that it's what's a local and who us and them. This town now is about us and them. I always wanted to open up a bar. If I did, it would have been called Locals on the access road. And my logo would have been, "You walk through that door, you're a local." So I have nine years on the Select Board, 15 years on the School Board. I spent time in the Rutland Regional Planning Commission, and I've done a lot of work in this town. And there's a saying, "Give 110%. That's not enough if you're going to take this seat."
Okay. Thank you very much, Jim. Okay, so first question, it goes to Andrew. Well, it goes to both candidates, but Andrew will lead off. So the question is, what qualifications do you feel are most relevant for the position of Select Board? And why do you think that you are the most qualified?
In my opinion, it's education. 20 years since I came, became a part of this community. I have multiple businesses. My family lives here and strives. I have friends, customers. And I wouldn't be here if I didn't care about it. I just didn't like the way we were headed. I am the most qualified to run for the seat as I bring construction experience. At this crucial time, when we guys are spending millions, over 50 million plus, and I think my experience can help save money. If we can be efficient, if we can save money somewhere, I think it can benefit all of us.
Thank you. Jim, same question to you. What qualifications do you feel are most relevant for the position of Select Board? And why do you think that you are the most qualified?
I believe in order to be a Select Board member, you have to learn to work with others. It's taken quite a while to do that. Like I had said earlier, this town was in turmoil back in '06 through '08. We've come a long way. It's not just one person. It's not if you went to college or not, because I don't know where this college stuff is coming from, but I'm not going to get into my education. If anyone wants to hear about my education later on and my business work of going into Tokyo when I was 21 years old and handling $20 million a month, you know, I could brag about that later on. I'm here to say that I have nine years of experience in the Select Board. I drove along with Steve Fineran and Chris Carr the exact program that Andrew is talking about, which is the Killington Forward Program. Okay? I think this board, the whole board, has proven that we can work with a developer. We could work with the land company to hand the sale over to the developer. We could work with the state. The state came out, the VEPSCI Commission had said, "I have never seen a town come into a TIF program for an application and be as transparent as this town." And even when some people were against it in the beginning, you guys spoke with them, you talked with them, worked it through, and then that person turned around. The joke in the paper is, he called himself a skunk in my garden, Art Malinsky. And it is amazing to work with people and be transparent and not be one person to say, "I can do this on my own because I work in construction and I went to college."
Thank you, Jim. Okay, so question number two is going to go to Jim first. So the question is, how do you feel about the current municipal budget that is on the town meeting day ballot? And what major drivers are there for the increase in town spending? So that's the first question to you, Jim.
So how do I feel about the municipal budget? I was one of the three that worked together on the municipal budget. And, you know, we do have a 9% increase this year. We're up some five cents. But if you look through to see what this board has done as a team over the course of the last four years, page 16 of this year's town report. In 2021, our tax rate was .5384. In 2022, it actually went to 5436. '23, it went to 5480. '24, it actually dropped down to .5445. If you take the last one, two, three, four, five years, we're averaging less than 4% a year increase. And this board, working together, not one person did this. Okay? Every year, we look at the budget and we make choices that's best for this town. And this year, in the budget, what the driver is, is specifically a fire department. Okay? The fire department has a $700,000 line increase in it. But yet, when you look at this budget, there's a total of $400,000 increase because we had found savings elsewhere. Now, why the fire department? Forget about KESAR at this point. The fire department volunteer that had nothing to do with the town came to the Select Board some three years ago and said, "We cannot handle the calls anymore in this town. We need to go to a hybrid system because we cannot get the volunteers anymore." So we had those choices to make, and we're making it so that this town is safe. And there is a fire department here that can answer every call and get to your house when 85% of our calls are emergency calls for health, not fire.
Thank you, Jim. So Andrew, same question to you. How do you feel about the current municipal budget that is on the town meeting day ballot? And what are the major drivers for the increase in town spending?
So my response might be four minutes, just a little bit longer. Are you guys ready to be shocked? In my opinion, our town budget is incorrect and illegal. It was accepted January 8, 2004 during the Select Board meeting when Michael Ramsey, the town manager, was present, Jim was present, Chris Carr, and I. Please note, Steve wasn't at the meeting. So the reason why I'm saying the budget is illegal is because Jim did not recuse himself from voting and accepting this budget that had conflict of interest written all over it. He is a full-town employee. His wife Mary is also a full-time town employee. And the budget included the 3% raise in salaries to the town employees. So in my opinion, this is wrong. What happened to the code of ethics? Here is the report. State of Vermont Ethics Commission Report from a month ago. Guys, it's an eye-opener. I highly recommend everybody prints it and reads it. So it talks about Uniform Code of Ethics for the appointed municipal officials. State of Vermont got an F among all other states about ethics. And it's scary. There are multiple examples. And it's not just happening in Killington. Killington actually is not here yet. They didn't get my letter yet. But there are many other towns. It's a big problem, not only for our communities, but for the whole state of Vermont. And they're working on it. They're working on it. So they were talking about conflicts of interest, lack of disclosure, retaliation that I experienced personally, and many of the other people from the fire department, volunteers, lack of enforcement of existing rules. And here, they keep going about nepoties, sexist, bullying, discouragement of public involvement, a lack of accountability, lack of training for municipal officials, and lack of resource to address these issues. The way this report ended by Christina Silveret, hopefully I pronounced her name correctly, she summarized, "Finally, irrespective of the approach taken by the legislature, the commission recommends the adoption of a whistleblower protection provision to prevent retaliation against those who have good faith concerns about municipal ethics violations." This is one part. So part two, bureaucracy. Actually, I'm answering the question.
And you're at three and a half minutes.
Yeah. All right. I apologize. One more minute. Bureaucracy. Eagles of the few are the reason for our town budget increase. We had a perfect volunteer fire department with a small budget. My opponent and his buddies destroyed it. And now, we, the taxpayers, have the burden of paying money for something that used to be almost free. Now, it's a half a million dollar increase per town report, page 20. Volunteers are the spine of this community. How could you place whistleblowers on the blacklist and file a no trespassing on them? It's called a retaliation by the officials. And here is the report that I talked to you about. Thank you.
Okay. Would you like to do a rebuttal?
I don't know if that was a rebuttal to me, or was that a...
Would you like a 30-second rebuttal? The way that a candidate chooses to answer the question is up to them. You have an opportunity, if you'd like to do a rebuttal.
Yeah, I would like to do a rebuttal.
And if you could keep it to 30 seconds.
Well, three and a half minutes. I got 30 seconds.
Well, you went over yours as well, so. And I want everybody to get their ideas out, and I'm trying not to cut anybody off.
So number one, while we're doing this, town budget was put together. It was not adopted on January, or August, or March, or whatever. The town budget, in Andrew's mind, is that it was done that day. Okay? We actually had problems with the technology that day. If anyone here knows anything about how town government runs, the board approves a budget that's put to you from the town manager. Being accused of doing something illegal because there's a 3% across the board raise increase to employees, the town manager who's sitting in the back, after this, you can talk to him. We did ask our town lawyer and asked them if there was a problem. And they said no because it's across the board. So the board, once again, is here for the town people. We make sure we do everything right. And it's getting tiring of getting accused of doing things illegally. And that's my rebuttal.
Thank you, Jim. So our next question goes to Andrew first. The next question is, how important is transparency in town government? And if elected, how will you improve this in town government? So Andrew, that question starts to you.
Here's a good example. I represent something clear. You can look through it and see. Here's my opponent that you cannot see clearly through. I am a clean piece of paper. I'm running first time. My opponent, on the other hand, if people look at his 20, 30 years of service, they can judge themselves, what kind of person he is, and so on. I'm running because we need transparency from our town officials. We need to stop having secret meetings between the town officials and Great Gulf, the developer, the ski resort. What are you guys hiding from us? Because we're all asking this question. I'm not, I've met 300 people in the last few weeks. I've been shaking hands and asking questions, and they're all saying, "What's going on behind the closed doors? How come those meetings are secret?" And even one meeting that I joined, I was on Zoom, when Jim saw me, that I was there, my name, his first word was "F." "What the hell is he doing here?" And then he realized I was listening. He said, "Hey, Andrew, sorry, it's a closed meeting." And then I had to be disconnected. That's why I'm running, because it's just crazy. We should know. What are they planning? What are they doing? Of course, to a certain degree, because if they're talking about a piece of property that they're thinking of buying, and they don't want other people bidding against it, I get it. It can be done behind the closed doors. But we are part of this community. We pay taxes here. We should know what's happening. And those secret meetings are not helping.
Okay. Thank you. So Jim, same question to you. How important is transparency in town government? And if elected, how would you improve this in town government?
Well, I don't know if we can improve it because, like I have said already, we are transparent. We announce every single one of our meetings. We announce every single one of our executive session meetings. We say that we're going in for contracts, or we're calling in with Great Gulf, we're telling everybody who we're going in with. I'm really sorry that this well-educated person here doesn't understand how government runs.
Okay. We're going to move on to question number four now. And Jim, you're going to start off answering this question. If elected, what are your priorities for the town?
Well, my priorities have been, before I walked into this door, is to make sure that Killington Forward keeps on going forward. We do bring the affordable housing spot on to play here. This town has a lot of issues going in front of it, especially with our tax rates. And it's not really the town tax rate, it's the school tax rate. But now, as I'm listening, I think I'm back into 2008 and 2009. And I really do hope that everybody here understands, this town came a long way. This community has come a long way. We are one, and we're working for better for the town. I really don't want to live through another pot of us being lost, us and them, illegal this, illegal that, when one can't prove it. We announce every single meeting we go to. I'm sorry that people can't come into the public hearing of an executive session to say, to listen to easements that we don't own yet. He even said himself, "If you're going to go look for a piece of property, if you're working it..." I don't know what he thinks is going on in there, but obviously, Andrew is a control freak, and he wants to know every single thing that's going on. What would I do if, what else would I do? I mean, it's the same as we've been doing, folks. This board, not just me, not one person, this board, Steve Fineran, Chris Carr, and myself, we act as one. And sometimes, we don't vote the same, but we don't get on each other's nerves. We don't call people doing things illegal, and we don't attack them. We have actual conversations.
Thank you, Jim. Andrew, same question to you. If elected, what are your priorities for the town?
My number one priority is to bring back the volunteers, lower our fire department budget. As you guys know, it's half a million dollars plus. We have to watch our expenses. We have to be efficient. We can't have a buggy in the front of the horse. And yet, we do have, the horse should be pulling the buggy. I'm a small business owner. I balance my checkbook. I watch my balance sheet. What we need to do, we need to see Sunrise Development break the ground, put 20 buildings. We need to see Great Gulf break the ground, start building those apartments. The moment we're going to get a million dollars in taxes, extra money, let's hire one extra fireman. The moment the whole Sunrise Development is done, the moment the whole village is done, when money comes in, we can be hiring more. But right now, we're hiring people. And that's the horse, that's the buggy in front of the horse. We also need to adopt clear rules. For example, form a commission and adopt a charter. Charter is a set of rules that we can abide by. We're like a ship that's floating without a GPS or a compass. Our town, Killington Town and Dover, Vermont, they do not have charters. All other towns, they do. Because they have a set of rules that dictate who takes what position, what's a conflict of interest, can a Select Board member be also a zoning administrator? And we also need to enforce the rules. For example, personal property tax, something that I brought up last week. Either we all pay or none of us. And the last one, our town is looking for a zoning administrator. This position is posted by our town manager, and here it is. And one of the minimum qualifications... And one of the minimum qualifications is, let me read, the minimum requirement for this position is a bachelor's degree. And my opponent here did not even go to college. So, I'm just wondering, how come, how come, you know, he's held in a position that requires a minimum of a bachelor's degree?
Okay. Thank you very much. Okay?
Yeah, Andrew's correct. I didn't go to college. I took college classes in ninth, 10th, 11th, and 12th grade. But who really cares? Number two, I am not the zoning administrator. If somebody understood how town government ran, I'm the interim zoning administrator. And if they understood the Vermont statutes, that while a town is looking for a zoning administrator, the select board appoints one of the three members to that position. I guess the other two folks decided that this uneducated person was the better one out of the two educated ones. Once again, I'm getting attacked here on college? How many people here actually did what they went to college for? I went on into electronics. I'm sorry.
Okay. Thank you. So, I'm going to just point out to both candidates that that question that we just had was, if elected, what are your priorities for the town? And I heard a lot of other noise in there rather than your priorities for the town. So, as we go through, we're on question number five now. If we can really stick to what the heart of the question is and the goal of the question is, I think it would be good for everyone. So, this one, hopefully, we can all agree on. What is one thing that Killington, the town, does better than any other community and something that we should be extremely proud of and celebrate? And that question's going to go to you, Andrew, first.
I brought a little something. When Irene happened, 2011, we, the community, we got together. And this is something the state of Vermont created for us to remember. In 2011, it was, I am Vermont strong. Yet, last year, we had damage again. Killington still suffered some, but not as much as many other towns. And here we are. It's we. We are strong. That's what we do. Sorry.
It's okay.
When my neighbor's house, Tabitha Neal, down the road here, burned down, we, as a community, we came together, formed GoFundMe. People opened their hearts, and they donated money. Somebody 50 bucks, somebody a little bit more. At the end, we got together. And that's what I'm proud of. But same time, let me tell you what I'm not proud of. How we treat people.
Andrew, I'm going to stop you for a minute, because, again, going back to what I said, and I'm going to let you finish up, is what do we do great in this community and something that we should be proud of? So, I'm going to let you finish that, your statement, okay?
I did.
Okay. All right, thank you. Jim, question to you. What is one thing that the town of Killington does better than any other community and something that we should be proud of?
Over the last 10 years, folks, we came together. We did live through Irene. Ask Whit Montgomery, who was the first person, he called at 4 o'clock in the morning. It was me. Who was the first person that opened up the office, the school? It was me. Who is the one that opened up his business, The Butternut Inn, for emergency relief? Me. But what do we do great here? We all get together, and we all try to come up with a way of making us better. And I'm tired of attacking people. I'm tired of getting attacked, looking in the paper for the last three weeks.
Jim, again, I'm going to say the same thing, something that we're proud of.
Proud of? I've already said it. I'm proud of this community for what we do, together.
Terrific. Thank you. So, our next question is relative to Woodstock High School. And as many of you know, Woodstock is talking about constructing a new school. Although the select board doesn't oversee that budget, I'm sorry.
It should be, do you feel safe, community?
Well, I didn't necessarily say that it was going to be in order, gentlemen.
Okay.
Have you ever taken a polygraph? They mess the questions all up. Did you know that? No, just kidding. Okay. So, the question is relative to Woodstock. And as many of you know, they're proposing a multimillion-dollar, $100 million construction. So, the question is, and this is actually a question that came in through emails as well, is where do you stand on the proposed $100 million Woodstock High School construction? And Jim, that's going to go to you first.
Sat on the school board for 15 years when they first started out with a project that was supposed to improve the school itself. We did something that was called a steam lab, and in the arts. A few people came together then, and all of a sudden took it off to another way of a new building. I sat there four years ago as the building and chair, chairman of Buildings and Grounds. I was also the chair of finance for a bunch of years over there. We can't afford the school the way it is today. We can't afford the school as a new school. What we were supposed to really do was, the state of Vermont has a problem. There's too many schools and too few students going down every single year. So, when I was on the planning commission, when I was on the chair of the Buildings and Grounds, what we were supposed to do was go to the state of Vermont and try to get other schools to close down before we came forward with a $100 million building. What this board has done now at the school is trying to build a school for 600 students instead of trying to build for more and wait for the state of Vermont and lobby the state of Vermont to help this district that has the top, second or third school in the state and say, you know what you're supposed to do since 1997, when Act 60 came in. So, I am for a new building, but not for 600, and not at this point. If you take the paper today, Agency of Ed Endorses Plan to Build New Woodstock School, qualifies the project as eligible for state aid, once reinstated as expected. That could take years for them to reinstate. But where is that money going to come from? I'm for a new school if we can get other schools to close. If we can't get other schools to close, this current school board has told us that this building should be closed. And maybe it's us that close, and we move to Rutland or a school choice to help our property taxes and to get our kids the right education in a safe and sound building.
Thank you, Jim. Andrew, same question to you. Where do you stand on the proposed $100 million Woodstock High School construction?
My favorite saying is, we can't spend the money we don't have. And on this school, I did not walk this school. I'm in construction. When I bought my building on Killington Road that had issues, I ripped the floors, put the new plumbing, ran the pipes, insulation, radiant heat, poured the slab. It was expensive, but I got it done. Pouring concrete. I know that if, the most important part of any structure is the foundation. If that foundation, 60 years ago, 70 years ago, wasn't sealed, and it sits next to the river, moisture can cause huge issues. So, I'll repeat, I did not walk the school. I don't know how bad it is. Driving by, it looks like a brick building, like any other building in Europe. Some buildings can be 200, 300 years old, and they're still standing there. To demolish a building and spend $100 million plus, can my kid benefit from it? Absolutely. My son might go there in 10 years, 10, 12 years. But then, am I going to be still around? Because I can't afford to live here. That's the reason why I'm running. I can't afford. Everything is going 18%, 20%, and it's pushing us locals from out of here. So, I'm kind of broken. I know many families who live here who are going to have a plan to stay here for a long time ago. They would like to send their kids there. But then, I don't know if I'm going to be around, if I'll be able to afford it.
Okay. Thank you. We're going to move on to our next question. And Andrew, you're going to answer this one first. Do you feel that Killington is a safe community? Why or why not? And please explain your answer.
Last year, my friend's truck was stolen. But from the front of his house, he was inside there with his family and three kids. And that was an eye-opener for me. I started locking my trucks. I never used to. I felt safe here. My tools, equipment, keys, they were always inside. Two years ago, I remember getting to my truck, and I saw the door was open. And I was like, I didn't leave the door open. It was kind of weird, the weird feeling that you're on your own property, and something like this happened. So, I started to lock my car since then. If you ask my neighbor, Judy Anne, that lives on Killington Road, who walks her dog three times up and down, she'll tell you that she doesn't feel safe walking, of course, on the side of the road, because we don't have a walkway. But even further out, people are flying 50, 45, 60 miles an hour. I can sit in my office and look at the meter there, and it will show 45, 50 miles an hour. And I totally get with it. We had this conversation, who wants to be a cop in our days? And he's having a problem finding people. So, it's hard to enforce something that, you know, he's by himself, he's guys, and we expect them to be here at this time, somewhere else at 8 o'clock. So, I think at this point, it's a tough one. Do we need more presence? Absolutely. Down the road, I guess, when we have more money coming in, we should be able to hire more people, and so that all of us can feel safer.
Thank you, Andrew. Jim, same question to you. Do you feel that Killington is a safe community? Why or why not? And please explain your answer.
I believe Killington is probably one of the most safest towns around us. Take a look down in Rutland. I believe our police department's doing a great job. Yes, they have a limited amount of budget. Yes, the board is trying to make the place safer. But I believe Killington is safe. Like I said, I've got a 20, 24, 26-year-old daughter. I believe this community is safe. If you don't believe this community is safe, no one's really come to the board to say that it's not safe. You know, there's break-ins. Tell me what town doesn't have a break-in? Tell me what town doesn't have somebody speeding? We don't have, this is a great community. I'm sorry, I'm going to end it at, this is a great community, and it's a very safe community.
Okay. Next question. And Jim, you're going to lead this one off. What is your vision for the Recreation Center/Rec Department in the next 10 years?
I sat on the Killington Select Board back in 2011, 10, 11, and 12, when I said there was rough times there, or whatever, there was. One of the things that I had pushed for, and if you look into the town report today, it's still there, every single year, we put $75,000 away to the rec fund for a new swimming pool and for the rec fields. It was hard to push that through, but it did go through. I believe in rec. We are moving over to the new town hall. We've opened up, the building is going to be for the rec department, also for the seniors. And the historians are taking over the vault. So, as far as rec, it is expanding. And anyone that is working in the rec department is doing a great job. And also, the rec commission is doing a great job. And my goal is just to keep on moving forward, Mike. We're putting the money to where it's supposed to be, and we have goals.
Thank you. Andrew, same question to you. What is your vision for the Rec Center/Rec Department in the next 10 years?
My opponent might be shocked, but I'll agree with him that, and I'll give you a thumbs up that you did a good job with that. My son, last year, went to the camp. And we all know, it was a rainy summer. He was sitting there with other kids under that tent for sometimes few hours. And the opportunity to be using the town office as the future place for kids to stay during the rain, cold weather, with air conditioning and heat, it's priceless. So, the vision that we had for this area definitely benefited all of us. We go to celebrate their Fourth of July with the whole community. So, that area is definitely staying where it is. Hopefully, we can improve it and add, hopefully soon, the new pool.
Well, as the former rec director in this town, I'm glad the rec question could bring the candidates together. That makes me very happy.
You have gone before all that started.
Yeah. Fair enough. Okay, next question. Andrew, you're going to lead off this one. How do you feel about Killington Forward and the development plan for roads, municipal water, and workforce housing development?
Killington Forward was a great idea. We were all sold on it. I voted for it. We should stick to it. I'm bringing the experience and the knowledge. I dig for a living. And it's, might sound crazy, but I like digging, and I like digging through the rules, finding stuff. That's what I do. Last summer, I worked at the Route 4 covert replacement with a contractor, C Card, down the road here, and the state inspector side by side. My experience is priceless. People said, why did you waste your time? You can be making more money working on your own. But I just love learning. That's what I do. So, I have that experience working on the, being there at the $2.8 million project. About the water, I did the SWOT analysis, strength, weaknesses, threat, and opportunities. So, the strength that I see, water will benefit everyone who will be able to get to the water line. Weaknesses, everyone who decides to connect will have a quarterly bill, and we have no idea how much it would cost. Threat, after talking to a local well driller, George Spear, most of you guys have heard the name, Arquici Well Drilling, who drilled almost every other well in this community, I was told that the water table might drop. How much? We have no clue. As you guys know, I own in-stone spas. We change water in the hot tubs this time of the year, almost at the houses. Sometimes twice a week, sometimes three times a week. People come, people go. And I've noticed that five years ago, some of the houses, we would fill up the hot tub within an hour, 15 minutes. Now, it's taking an hour, 45. And that's kind of scary, because I'm like, what's different? Of course, the more people come in here, the more people using, our water table is dropping. So, that's a threat that we don't control. Opportunity, this town can grow, of course. The more residents can add, the more residents we can add, the more we will be able to tax and hopefully lower our tax burden. About the workforce housing, I think it's just a Band-Aid. Who will pay for it? I think we should create an incentive to property owners to rent their units to locals and offer them a tax discount.
Okay. Thank you very much. No, you can answer the question, because I don't think you've been, Andrew led that one. So, this is your opportunity right now to answer. How do you feel about Killington Forward and the development plan for roads, municipal water, and workforce housing?
Killington Forward was put forward by the current select board, Steve Finnan, Chris Carr, and myself, through many of these meetings that we had over the last three years. It's a great plan to move forward. As far as the roads and the municipal water, they fall underneath the TIF program. As far as a threat, this board does its job as a whole. We hired on hydrologists to test the well area. We've been told by a hydrologist and the state that this is a different source of water. This is a glacial water at, it's the same as down at the Coltons in Stockbridge, that bottled water all day long, 6,000-gallon trucks going out of there all day long. I mean... I mean, I'm sitting here and have the advantage of going through a lot of executive sessions for exactly things like this, getting stuff done, having hydrologists do it. This board puts it out there, and we hire professionals on. We don't go in there with our individual, I like digging, so I know everything. We hire the professionals on. And we're going to continue as a team to hire professionals on. As far as the workforce housing, the workforce housing was one of the goals in the TIF through VEPSE at first. They dropped that housing project from the TIF development. But the board, Finneran, Carr, and Half, continue to move forward. We found a piece of property. We bought it for $700,000. We didn't even stop there. In executive sessions that we get called on that were, you know, secret or whatever, we worked with the developer and the resort, and they each have pledged the $350,000 apiece, and the check was pledged for June of this year to come in before our first payment on that $700,000 has to be done. It is not a farce, it's not a Band-Aid. It's 250, 300 units for workforce housing. Talk to the state, they'll ask you, what other town is doing that? This is a great team, Finneran, Carr, and Half.
Thank you, Jim. Okay, and our final prepared question for this evening, and it's going to, Jim, you're going to lead this one off. It is, what are the three biggest obstacles and opportunities for the town in the next three years?
I'm going to start with opportunities. Affordable housing, it is moving forward. Working with the resort and the developer, it's moving forward. As far as getting water down the road, we need the water. It's going to open up for other people to do fire sprinklers, fire hydrants down the road, so we won't have to be buying bigger pump trucks anymore. There is a plan that's put in place. That's my three opportunities. Three obstacles in this town? Andrew Geeter and Instone.
Jim.
Well, I mean, sitting here and being attacked, when someone's not in meetings but is crying because he's not in the meetings, it's an obstacle. And this town has come around, and they have voted in, and three to one voted in for Killington Forward, but we have someone that wants to dig to get, I don't know, does he want the contract? That's not how it works.
Okay, thank you very much. Andrew, the question to you is, what are the three biggest obstacles and opportunities for the town in the next three years?
Jim, keep shooting yourself in the foot. Obstacles, inability to find qualified workforce. Those who are knowledgeable, retired. New generation doesn't want to work. That's how I see it. Inability to find housing, as it's too expensive. Skyrocketing taxes, and the weather. Weather, we do not control the weather. Those are the obstacles. Opportunities, we can invest our money wisely into our infrastructure. Village development, that's huge. Growing summer business, that's huge. And I think new town management team built around Michael Ramsey. I think getting the new people. We actually hired just recently Will, who actually went to college, Castleton State College. I shook his hand, I'm like, listen, I'm proud to see you here, you know, because we need experienced people. Thank you.
You get the rebuttal now?
You do have an opportunity rebuttal, yes.
I have this 15% rule, folks. 15% is the minority. 15% is heard the loudest. The minority is heard the loudest. I'm sorry, we had to put a short-term rental program into place because 15% don't do it. But my rebuttal here is that to attack the young generation that they don't want to work, Wyatt Moser, my three daughters, Jen and Steve Nissenblatt's kids, many other people here that have kids that have gone and grew up in this town, that's ridiculous. That's my rebuttal. We have kids that work.
Okay. We're going to move on to the questions that we've had emailed in by members of the public. And Kelly, did we collect any questions this evening?
No.
No, okay. Hopefully, we're able to get to a couple of these. So Andrew, you are going to lead off this first question that was emailed in. Other than the seasonal homes and condos, condo owners, excuse me, how is Killington going to attract full-time residents when taxes and real estate are so high?
I don't know how. I'm just looking at myself, seeing what's happening around me. Is this a good time to cash out and move out of here? I mean, that's definitely in the back of my mind. Do I love this community? Would I like to stay? Absolutely. My wife might say, listen, you know, there are better opportunities somewhere else. For example, like George, you already have a property there, schools are there, you know, we can go and buy a $600,000 house that I cannot find here for 1.5 million. But I'm running. I'm running because I think I can make a difference. I think that there is a very good opportunity to step in, do something else for the community. I've been doing little things, of course, not big ones. I think it's my time.
Jim, same question to you. And the question again was, other than seasonal homes and condo owners, how is Killington going to attract full-time residents when the taxes and real estate is so high?
Front of the paper, well, Andrew's been advertising in the paper, but whatever. Local taxpayers see double-digit increases in ed tax rates again. My name is mentioned in here a lot. Been going back and forth with the school, talking about their budget, talking, that's where we have to have savings, folks. When the administration is giving 5% increases to themselves, when there's a total increase of 26% in the school teachers' budget line, and it's not the teachers getting the 26%, it's because when COVID came in, there was all this Opera Fund money that was given for one-time use that Phil Scott talked about and said, use it wisely. They chose to hire on other staff, and schools can't fire anyone. How are we going to get housing here? We have to work on our school taxes. I threw out an idea, and it's an Article 5, of seeing if you folks would like us to take a look at moving out of the district. I got knocked down on it from my really good friend that owns the paper, calling it a dead end, okay? It's not a dead end. You have to start somewhere. We can't go off the cliff. One of the things for housing is the affordable housing. You know what, folks? Yeah, maybe Andrew's right. We may all be living in the affordable housing because that may be the only place. But I can tell you something. I don't know what he's running for. He just said he's running to Lake George, or if he's running for the board.
The question was around how we attract more full-time residents here.
We are attracting residents here. We have doctors and lawyers and everybody else coming in here that are affording those houses. They just don't understand, and you can talk to them, most of them don't understand what the tax rate is going to be afterwards. They really don't.
All right, so our next question again, and this was emailed in, and it actually might be a nice segue from what we were just talking about. And it was mentioned a little bit this evening from both candidates. Jim, you're going to be able to answer this one first. How do you feel about the new village being built at the base of Killington?
The new village building at the base of Killington was a plan that was approved some 10 or 12 years ago. It's only 208 units. I think we all approved it in a vote last year, three to one. We need that part to be built so we could move forward. The plan that's there, and it's kind of funny, is because, I don't know, if the village is not built, an uneducated person worked a deal out that no matter what, we raise their value of their land, and they still have to pay for the road and the water. So I really do believe that this town needs that phase of the village built, okay? That's what's approved. Going forward, I believe we still need more. And that's going to be the growth to our tax base, which Andrew had said earlier. But that's only going to help our municipal side that's some 60 cents, not the $3.24 you're going to see for the education. That money's not going to help us there, folks.
Okay, thank you, Jim. Andrew, same question to you. How do you feel about the new village being built at the base of Killington?
Two weeks ago, my wife called me up. Honey, can you please drive me and Robert to the Ramshead? Because Robert needs to go and ski at the magic carpet. And I'm like, honey, you already left an hour ago. She's like, yes, I couldn't find parking. So she came back home, I drove her there, dropped them off, stood there looking around, full parking lots. I opened up livekillington.com and zoomed in on the village location. And I realized, I'm looking at the village, I'm not looking at any parking. I've heard some parking underneath the buildings, but we don't know, are we going to have three layers, four layers, levels of parking? We don't know that. I don't know that. I haven't seen anything yet. So I remember the previous meetings, we're all concerned. We, not only locals, locals, but also the community, people that live around Plymouth, Bridgewater, Mandan, everybody was saying, listen, is our ski experience going to change? And I think the answer is yes, it will change. We're just hoping that there's going to be enough parking. When I talked to some of the Killington employees who have to drive past Grand Park it far away, and Mike Salamana personally drives them all the way up to work, I mean, this is kind of crazy. It's nice to see him bossing his employees back and forth. But if you ask them, what do you think about parking so far away? The question is, are you getting paid for all this time? That it takes half an hour to get back to work or not? I couldn't get that answer. So will the village be beneficial? Yes. But I think most of the voters, they mentioned that they are concerned about the parking, and hopefully we can create more parking along Killington Road.
Thank you. We just have a few more. And again, these are the questions that were emailed in. Andrew, you're going to start off with this question. Does the Select Board only serve locals, or do they have an obligation to run the town along with the town manager in a responsible way to serve all taxpayers?
Majority of my customers are the second homeowners. They once told me this, Andrew, we are the milking cows here. We're just paying taxes, we can't vote. And that's been the case for many, many years. Second homeowners are those people who are paying my bills. Most of our community, people that serve this community, they live around us. They work for the town or for those second homeowners. They buy properties, they buy hot tubs, they hire us for plowing, painting, landscaping, lot clearing, septic line replacements, and so on. It's, they're part of this community, but they're just being, they're feeling that their vote doesn't matter. And if you look at the history, 450 people that come and vote, we call the shots. We have 1,000 people living here full-time, maybe a little bit more, but 450 people call the shots in this town.
Okay, Jim, same question to you.
Could you repeat the question? I don't think I was answered.
I... The way a candidate chooses to answer the question is their prerogative. The question is to you. Does the Select Board only serve locals, or do they have an obligation to run the town along with the town manager in a responsible manner to serve all taxpayers?
My answer is yes.
Okay.
If you want me to explain why?
It's entirely up to you.
I think we've gone through this with Killington Forward. I think we've gone through this with a community. A community is a community. We have visitors that come here. We have taxpayers that do pay. We have all kinds of taxpayers. We have businesses here that are not locals. They own businesses here, but they're not, they don't vote. The Select Board's job is to put the best budget forward for all. And I think Finneran, Carr, and Half do a great job. And the answer is yes, for all.
Okay, thank you. Second to last question. Jim, you're going to start this one off. What is your experience? And I'm going to, again, this was an email question, and I'm going to expand upon it a little bit. What is your experience serving on local boards, commissions? And that could be any sort of small group, big group, but working with other people-type boards?
I moved here in 1997. I lived in Sunrise Condominiums, East Glade A1. I joined the Board of Sunrise Homeowners. I was on there for five years. I actually became the Vice President of the Board. Worked with the resort at that point. They wanted to remove the lift from Route 100 all the way up to the top of Sunrise, past where it is. I sat with Alan Wilson, Jeff Temple, and came up with the idea of, let's move the base from Route 100 to the base of Sunrise Condominium Homeowners Association so it would stay as a ski-on-ski-off community. From there, I moved down to Weathervein. I got involved in the Planning Commission, the Select Board, Regional Planning Commission, the School Board. I've worked with Mary Guggenberger from the school. I still work with Mary Guggenberger from the school, even though I'm not on the School Board. And I think I've shown my experience, and a lot of things I've got done with the rest of the boards. Thank you.
Thank you. Andrew, same question to you. What is your experience serving on any local boards, commissions, groups, areas where you're working with other people?
I'm an immigrant. I came here with $2,400 in debt because I borrowed $2,400 from my parents. I worked my ass to survive. My wife, when she came here with zero English, because when we met, apparently she studied German all her life. So she volunteered for three years at the Rutland Hospital until she got her LNA. So I didn't, sir, I didn't have time to serve yet, and I'm asking for an opportunity to help and serve for this town.
Thank you. Last question, and Andrew, you're going to lead this one off. In one word, who would you like to see most perform at the World Cup next year?
I've been painfully rooting for, she's different, but she's like, third, second place. I'm hoping she gets first one.
No, perform musically.
Perform where?
Music. For music. What band?
You got me off guard here.
Jim, who would you like to see perform?
Aerosmith.
Aerosmith.
Metallica.
Metallica. Love it. All right, we're going to move on to closing statements. And again, by a flip of the coin, Andrew gets to make the first closing statement.
You guys heard our questions and answers. I'm new, new blood, some people call it. Maybe I'm not as experienced in certain things, but I'm a multiple business owner. I care about this community, and I would like to serve it a little bit better. Thank you.
Thank you. Jim, closing statement.
I appreciate the support from everybody in the past 26 years. I hope it continues. I'd love to see this town move forward. I can promise you, if you do not... I can promise you, if you do not vote for me, I'm not leaving. I'm not gonna run like somebody else. I didn't move here because I saw an opportunity in Killington. I moved here because I loved this place, 'cause I've been skiing here since nineteen seventy-six. I have multiple people that I've made. I woke up about four weeks ago, and things are a little rough. I've got a sister that's in an assisted care living that's a year younger than me. I've got three friends that have last stage of cancer. But I'm driving in the car coming back one day from Long Island. And this is about the community, so this is where it's gonna go. There is two things that I really love about my life in this community, and there's two things that I really hate about my life in this community. The first thing about this community that I love is that I get to meet so many different people. The second thing I love is that I get to talk and listen to so many different people and try putting things together so we can make this community better. The first thing that I hate about my life right now is I get to meet so many different people. And the second thing that I really hate is, is that I get to listen to so many different people. Taking this spot of Select Board is a very hard spot to put somebody in that's not experienced. Thank you for your support.
So I wanna remind everyone that Town Meeting Day is March fifth. Uh, if you wanna vote early, you can certainly do that at the Town Office. I'm sure that, uh, Peggy or Lucretia can help you with that. Um, I appreciate everyone showing up tonight and, um, and helping us with, uh, with listening to these candidates and, um, and just partaking in this. So I think we need to give a round of applause for our candidates tonight. Thank you, everyone.